Okay, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to start the meeting. Please rise and join me. Oh, Dean, show up?
Not yet.
Apparently, Councilmember Harry and Councilmember Kirby Pratt. The whole business approval of minutes, the regular meeting minutes of February 4th, 2021 are attached. Need a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of February 4th, 2021 as presented.
So move.
Second.
Second.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Stadnica?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
To business, audience participation. We did not get anything for audience participation, no emails, so we don't have any tonight. For presentations, we got Leavenworth County Commissioners Culberson and Smith, and Leavenworth County Public Works Director, Mr. Knoll, who will be giving us a presentation on the Eastern Gateway Project Presentation. I believe you all were given in your pack. Gentlemen? Thank you, gentlemen, for having us out this evening. We're here to over project that
Need to speak into the mic. You're breaking up. I can hear you.
Okay. Is that better?
Yeah, you're telling them going.
How's that?
It wasn't on last night when I was there. Make sure the mic's on.
Check one, two. Yep. Can you hear me now?
That's good. Okay.
How's that? Is that better? Okay. So, anyway, we're here to present what I call the 152 Bridge idea. It's been also called the Eastern Gateway. Basically, it's an idea to build a new bridge across the Missouri River that's more in line with Eisenhower and 152 Highway. A lot of you are familiar with 152 as it comes over on the Missouri side at that end of 435. This would basically connect the end of 152 to the end of Eisenhower. Kind of what started this is years ago when I used to fly my little
Hang on, man. Why don't you try holding the mic because
Is it breaking up again?
I'm really hard to hear you.
Okay, how's this?
That's why
So years ago, when I was flying my little plane out of Noah's Ark Airport, every time I would leave, I would notice out of the same windshield, I would see the end of Eisenhower and the end of 152 Highway. And I just could not figure out why we've never connected that. It's only five miles across from the edge of Lansing City Limits to 152 Highway. So everybody knows now, you know, to get to the airport takes 30 minutes. You know, you gotta go a half hour to go five miles. It doesn't make any sense. So, you know, our idea was to try to get this bridge built further south from where Centennial Bridge is. And we're getting a lot of kickback about maybe Centennial would go away. And that's not the plan. You know, this would be in addition to Centennial Bridge is, I think, what the plan is. So I did some checking, and about 20 years ago, this came up. And the first people to shoot it down were Platte County. They didn't want to be a drive-through county and have to take all the brunt of the, you know, condemnations and everything and not get much benefit from it. So we started with Platte County this time. So me and Commissioner Shemke went over and met with them. And they liked the idea. They've changed a lot in the last 20 years. They've got into rural sewage and development is a lot different than it was 20 years ago. So they actually like this idea, too. We also talked to Parkville. If you guys have been over there lately, Parkville's annexed all the way up 45 Highway. There's a sports complex at 45 and 435. That's all in the city limits of Parkville. But now Parkville is only five miles from Lansing City Limits. So I think they've thrown out this lifeline, and I think, I feel like it's up to us to grab it. You know, Mid-America Regional Council allowed us to put this in their long-range plan to qualify for federal and state funds. Even after, it was after the deadline, we were supposed to turn it in. But when they saw the project, they said this, we think, has enough merit where we're going to allow this, put this in because it looks like one of the better projects that we've got. There's a, if you look at the map on 435, it's basically a big circle around Kansas City. But there's a dip in it on the northwest corner. And I found out that that's because Leavenworth County wasn't in Mid-America Regional Council's membership when they were planning 435. So this would actually fix that issue where 435 would have connected Leavenworth County, but it didn't happen because of that. So we're trying to, you also get that fixed. You know, and if you would, I don't know if you've been over to Liberty, Missouri lately, but if you go to Liberty, Missouri, they're growing like crazy. The Shoal Creek area and the North Oak trafficway and that whole corridor. I talked to their city councilman, and they said, "We were dying until 152 got completed to our city." And since 152 got put in, we can't even keep up with the progress. So if you just go over there, take 152 all the way to Liberty, and I think you would see a mirror image of what would happen if we were to complete this 152 bridge to our side of the river. That's basically all I wanted to go over was just kind of laying it out there. If you have any more technical questions, you know, I think the important thing is, I was just trying to get this plan on the shelf. You know, first thing anybody says is, "How are you going to pay for it?" Well, I've seen so many projects get done because they were just on the shelf and ready to build, and then the money showed up. So my plan was to just try to get this thing on the shelf, get the plans in the queue. So that when the money does show up, but it looks like there's a lot of windows lining up. There's a big push by the state and the federal government for infrastructure projects. Also, they're looking for public-private sector joint ventures. And it sounds like also Missouri is looking at this or maybe looking at what tolling would do for funding projects. So if you guys have any questions, I was going to let Bill or Mike talk a little bit. Oh, that was the whole point with coming. Can you turn that on, Matt? Yeah. Actually, I was going to start that while I was talking. But, so what we did is we hired a drone company because it's hard for people to wrap their mind around exactly what we're talking about. How long would it take to get there? So we hired a drone to fly exactly the path that you would take if you got in your car at QuickTrip in Lansing. And we made the speed limit exactly the same as what the vehicle would be, and the route's exactly the same by GPS. So if you watch this video, this gives you an idea of exactly what we're talking about. So it's going to start out, the top left is Leavenworth, Lansing, and there's the path to 152. So it's going to put you basically in your car, and there's the top of QuickTrip. There's Eisenhower and Main Street, and the red line is the proposed highway route. So we even drove 30 miles an hour to the edge of town. There's a stopwatch in the bottom right. And so it shows you that, then this path is just a general idea. So I don't want everybody to get nervous exactly where the line's going. If it goes through a house or something, that doesn't mean we're actually going to take that house out. It's just a general idea of where it's going to go. But the timing is what's important. To show people that you could be in Lansing and then be over there at 152 in exactly six minutes. So that puts you at the airport in about eight minutes. Puts you at Zona Rosa in about nine or 10 minutes. So it makes you basically part of when you, when you're, you're only five minutes away from something, you back, you actually become part of that. The other nice thing about this project in today's age, project of this size, you would think you'd be talking about taking out a lot of houses. Almost no house. I mean, it's all farm ground, a lot of it's in floodplain. There's actually the path we picked. There's a raised grade that makes it cheaper to build slightly out of the floodplain. This red line right here, to the right of that, just slightly, where those trees are, is actually where it would probably go. And it's raised up out of the floodplain elevation, so that'll save us some money. I think there's only two property owners on this side of the river. The other reason that I wanted to present to you guys to make sure you guys were good with this was there's really only two entities that deal with everything on this side of the river. That's Leavenworth County and Lansing City. Like down in the river bottoms, there's only two property owners that own all that land. So we're not talking about a whole lot of property owners to deal with. It's another nice thing. Even when you get on the Missouri side, it's just using a ground that's either woods or rough farm, farm ground. You guys have any?
Hey, everybody. This, this project started, they looked at doing, this is Mike. They looked at doing this project about a year ago. There's been some money spent to get this. We thought the best way to show up was the drone. And one of the questions I got already, we're not here to ask for money. What we're doing is seeing the concept, the council members and the mayor and the staff feel this is something that we can work on together and keep going forward with it. Bill, the Public Works Director for the county, is going to be able to ask any, answer any of your technical questions here in just a little bit. But this has got about three more minutes, and I'll let y'all just view this. But as Commissioner Culberson was saying, as you can tell, the land basically is, is rural. It's things that we don't have to go in and have to do baking or anything like that. Again, this was done 25 or 30 years ago, was looked at. It was down by South. Councilman Trinkle may remember that, and Stadnica, it was down by Minefield or something like this. But this is the best route. This isn't to say that you can't adjust it, but we're just trying to get this off the ground. So I'm going to let y'all enjoy our great film, and then I'll turn this over to, back over to Jeff.
There's Noah's Ark right there on the right. And then there's Union Pacific Railroad just going across. You'll notice the cars look like they're going super fast. That's because the drone's only flying at about 38 miles an hour. We actually fast-forward it so that we can make the time work out exactly right of what a car would take at 70 miles an hour, so that the time is exactly right on how long it would take you to get from QuickTrip to 152. Some stuff I was going to let Bill talk about was when I was talking about windows lining up. Like I said, we really just wanted to get this on the shelf so that if money ever showed up, you know, a lot of, I've seen a lot of projects get done just because of that reason. But there's been some private investors that reached out to us or that we've talked to. And I was going to let Bill talk about them a little bit and then go into some detail, Bill, about the finance. When we get, Jones My Road is going to be up here on the left hand. You'll see where it's coming in. You'll be able to see 152 here pretty quick.
This is really impressive. I'm impressed with this drone video.
I couldn't think of anything else. You know, I thought about having Greg or somebody take me up and hold my phone out the window, but I didn't think it would come out in there as good as this, so. It did, it did come out good. I don't want to lose my phone either. But that was important to us to get the timing exactly right. Because, you know, people, they always look at a Kansas map or a Missouri map, but they hardly ever look at, you know, the whole area together at one time. And so we thought this is the best way to do it, to get people to see exactly. They just, it's hard to wrap their head around. It's only five miles across. So there's 152 in the top right there. See, the car is going over the viaduct. And there's Jones My Road coming in. So at the speed limits, 30 miles an hour from QuickTrip to the city limits, and then 70 from there would make it exactly six minutes. I'll let Bill talk a little bit.
So what I'll try to speak to the city council here tonight about is a little bit more of the technical background of the project and how we come to where we are here today. So in March of 2020, the Board of County Commissioners engaged into a contract with Trans Systems to do a conceptual study that was a study of different proposed routes and obstacles along those routes and how this crossing may be able to be made in a feasible manner. And so from that study, there were, there are several obstacles in between many of these connections. We have the VA medical facility. You have the Lansing Prison. You have a cemetery near the end of Eisenhower. You have the wastewater treatment facility. And so there are a lot of things that need to be looked at in order to determine a route that was feasible. And so the study did focus in on that connecting area at the end of Eisenhower Road. But it also has interchanges tying into Highway 5 as an alternative option as a secondary exit, and then a third exit at Gilman Road. So there is the viability aspect of other exits where all the traffic wouldn't be funneled into a singular location. And so I think that's an important aspect of the project as, as if it was to be constructed, you could see some substantial growth through the south. And so through that process, there were some traffic generation modeling that was completed by the Mid-America Regional Council and studied by Trans Systems and provided as a part of the study. From that information, they also looked at cost estimates in $20,000 for what this would cost. They did, if you do look at the back of your Eastern Gateway Concept Study that was completed, there are the two primary routes. There's a northern alignment and a southern alignment. The southern alignment does allow for those additional connecting links that I did just discuss. And it also actually has a lower cost because it is the high bank of the old river. And if you take the high bank of the old river, you are located in the FEMA 1% floodplain or the 100-year floodplain, but you are not located in the floodway. And so you do not have to meet the requirements of a no-rise certification through that location. So the structure does not need to be elevated or be a bridge structure. So I think that's important. The longer the bridge, the higher the cost, and the higher the cost of maintenance in the future. And so you were able to, the southern alignment, albeit a little bit longer, had a cost that was $50 million less than that northern alignment in their cost projections. And so as, as that was completed, the county was contacted by several different people representing private sector law firms that were familiar with P3 projects or public-private partnerships. Specifically, we engaged with Baller &amp; Spar, and they provided us the, I provided myself the contact information for hedge fund managers in this space all throughout the United States. So we solicited those people and cold-called them and made multiple presentations over the course of several months using this Eastern Gateway Concept Study. Eventually, we did make a good connection with Aerop. Aerop is a privately-owned hedge fund investment firm that is owned by the employees. And they are a substantial investor in the single terminal project at the KCI Air Corps. So they are very familiar with this area and the northern Kansas City region. And so this project was specifically of interest to them because of that investment that they had previously made. So with that, they provided us proposals for a feasibility study, and the Board of County Commissioners engaged them to complete a feasibility study to determine the private sector funding that may be available for a project such as this. Relevant to that conversation, the Kansas legislation over the past several years has just recently changed the laws regarding tolling and also tolling by subsidiary levels of government. So they have opened the window for this type of private sector investment in the state of Kansas. And I think specifically they are, they seem to be interested in trying to find projects such as this that are viable from a road, a traffic count perspective for private investment. And so from that, we did provide them a bunch of information, and the county engaged their services and also the services of Baller &amp; Spar. Baller &amp; Spar is a law firm that is represented by a Kansas native who had graduated from KU Law and was also once military, was stationed here in Leavenworth as part of the military operations. And so he is also familiar with this area. And so he had just recently completed the Lewis and Clark Viaduct, which is the largest bridge structure that's privately funded in North America and Indianapolis. And it did also require multi-jurisdictional by-state agreements because it does cross into two jurisdictions. So his expertise in this field is very valuable. And that project was a private partnership, like I said, the largest in North America, and also involves federal highway funds. And so he is familiar with both the federal level bureaucracy and local and state legislation in this area. And so from that, Aerop requested additional traffic study information over a 50-year investment period. And so the county went back and re-engaged a Phase 2 of the initial Eastern Gateway Concept Study. The scope of that project is included in some packets that I brought here tonight that you guys can all pick up copies of and review that scope of services. We have not received that information back at this time. We're very early in this process. And so we wanted, I think Commissioner Culberson and Commissioner Smith both wanted to reach out to you here this evening prior to receiving any of the information back, just so we're ahead of any misinformation that might get out there or questions that may arise from either yourselves or the public. Once that information is available, we'll make it available to you. After that information comes available, probably in the next four to five weeks, Aerop will complete their feasibility study and produce that number of private sector investment that they are interested in, in this project at funding. So really, at that point is when this thing will have a determinative end that it will either, will be either back here before you and before KDOT and MoDOT really discussing the viability of this project or where this project stands at this point in time. So with that, I'll quit. I'll stop my presentation. If anybody has any questions, I will try to answer them as best I can.
Go ahead, Don.
Yeah, just one question. You mentioned private sector interest in this versus, you know, all government doing it. What is the advantage to the private sector or whatever in going forward with this project or funding this project or helping fund this project?
Well, currently, there is not a federal funding source that we can just apply for. It would have to be part of a, of some sort of legislative package in the future if it was going to be funded by the federal government. So private sector investment is the, by far, the fastest means to complete a project like this. If the private sector were to determine that it is viable and agreements could be reached between the public and private sector and all the different entities involved in a project, it has a seven- to eight-year timeframe. From a public sector scenario, you could be looking at, you know, 10 to 20 years if you could find the right funding source for it. Currently, the state does not have that funding source from what, from what I understand. Yes, and this would also be Yeah, and private sector does tolling.
Yes.
I guess I didn't hear the answer to Don's question. What's in it for the private sector funding the project? How do they get their money back?
Yeah, that would be reimbursement from tolling.
From, from the city and state and county or who? I mean?
No, the toll, it would be a toll.
It would be a toll. Yeah, it would be a toll paid by the traffic.
Okay. That's what I figured.
Marcus.
Yes. Hey, this is a great, great presentation, and I've been tracking this since it was presented a few years ago. Mike, Smith, I appreciate you bringing that up again. And Jeff, thanks for coming tonight. So the question is, is when you opened this up, Jeff, you said a lot of interest, a lot of growth. And I watched that growth as I was a professor over at William Jewel for three years. So I drove that and watched that grow from from 152 all the way to Liberty. I mean, it just started exploding. Are you going to get a lot of pushback from Leavenworth in this growth? This projected growth? Is that, is that something you're going to get a lot of pushback on or?
I think that's exactly the hesitance that I've gotten so far from some of the members at Leavenworth City was two things. They're, one, afraid of losing Centennial Bridge. And two, they think that Lansing would probably outgrow Leavenworth or even Baser would outgrow Leavenworth because of the position of the new bridge. So yeah, those are two things that I'm getting some kickback on.
Well, I think we're ready to annex Leavenworth anytime they want.
Now, you guys are probably not old enough to remember Centennial Bridge being a toll bridge, but I am.
Oh, yes, I do.
So that bridge made a lot of money on Sunday when you couldn't buy beer in Kansas.
Yeah, yep, exactly.
So my follow-up question to that, Jeff, is, is based on this presentation and the fact that we have a business development center, Leavenworth has a big, large business development center. Are you seeing that traffic in part of this growth to help bring businesses in those business development centers that we have built and nothing's coming over?
I think that's front and center to exactly what I'm talking about. This, this, LCDC and the Port Authority have the most to gain. This makes their product viable. You know, I think, you know, we, it's been said many times, we put the cart before the horse. We built these industrial parks, but you don't have rail or you don't have a major interstate. That just recently changed with the Tongan and Oksin one. Before that, there was no interstate. So this would fix a lot of problems. It would fix our connectivity to North Kansas City, make us part of that homogeneous region where we're basically in the neighborhood. Friend of mine's on city council in Oklahoma City, Norman, actually. And Norman and Moore, I don't know if you guys are familiar with them, they have always grown. They, they were insulated from the real estate bubble that popped. In the last 50 years, they've done nothing but grow and grow and grow. And they said the key is transportation. If you make it easy for people to access where they want to go, make everything five minutes away, people come. And that, you know, we've, we've had a lot of problems getting industrial and commercial here because of lack of connectivity. And this would fix that problem. I'm, I'm confident.
Just, wait, what's that? Marcus, just a point on that a little bit, too. For you folks and most of you around here, when we went out and received a grant from Main Street, remember it was a four-lane, and we went out and received a 14, $15 million grant from the state, we increased it as soon as we put that fifth lane in. I mean, absolutely as soon, and all of a sudden, development started. We didn't have the, and it was fast food, but it was, it was Arby's, it was IHOP. Because now people could get there and they could get in and out with no problems. Jeff Culberson is absolutely right. To get them to come down the road and be in this area is a main thing. And I don't see this as a competition. I've had chats with Leavenworth, too. I don't see this as a competition because the funds they're going to get to make yours happen is probably going to be from the state and maybe some federal. The private funding is what's really driving this project. We need that. And that comes about, and this project can probably, probably occur. But it's, it's, it's in a great location, and it's definitely going to serve Lansing and Leavenworth, too. But Baser also, I've talked to the Baser folks down there. Anyway, I just wanted to mention that, Marcus.
Yeah, and so to follow up, I don't want it to get into a competition, you know, with the city of Leavenworth. I don't want them to feel like, you know, Baser and Lansing are going to outgrow us, so we're going to fight this thing. You know, what's good for the goose, it's good for the game. You know, if it's good for the area, good for the neighborhood, everybody wins. That's, that's the position, you know, that I'm trying to take on this with the city of Leavenworth. This isn't about, you know, putting one city in front of another city or, or you losing Centennial Bridge. You know, Secretary Lorenz reiterated to him just in a meeting a couple of weeks ago, the Centennial Bridge is a completely separate project. You know, yeah, it needs to get fixed or replaced or whatever. That's a whole different project than what we're talking about here. We're not, we're not trying to replace Centennial. And we're not, and we're not out to, you know, make one city And we're not, and we're not out to, you know, make one city, you know, prosper over the top of another. We're just trying to better the entire Northeast Leavenworth County region. Jesse, you had a question?
Yeah, well, I, I, I would think this would be a benefit to them as well because their industrial park is on Eisenhower, which is where the road will end up, number one. But my, my question was, if it was funded by an outside source, I would assume that they would be 100% responsible for any maintenance, as long as they're recouping their money?
Responsible for the maintenance of the bridge? Is that what you said? You broke up a little bit. Yeah.
The whole highway, the whole highway, yeah.
So that is a part of what would be determined in the by-state and inter-local MOUs that would come in conjunction with this project. Some are, some of them are privately held, some of them are held by the local entities. And so a portion of whatever revenue is generated from the, from the interstate would be, go back to maintenance to cover those costs. And so that would be a determine, determination that was made later on on how that was to be handled. And that would probably be something that KDOT and MODOT would weigh in heavily upon.
Thank you.
Any other questions, gentlemen, or these folks? Okay, well, thank you so much for coming tonight. We really appreciate the brief.
Yep, Commissioner Culberson and Public Works Director Noel gave me some booklets, so I'll try to get you guys some hard copy booklets in the next week or so.
Appreciate you guys.
Yeah, it was a great presentation.
Okay, moving on. Items for council consideration. Item number three, the road maintenance agreement, Lansing and Leavenworth County. The road maintenance agreement was discussed at the January 28th work session. Revisions were sent to the county and incorporated into the agreement, which the county commissioners approved on February 10. I need a motion to approve the agreement for the road maintenance responsibilities between Lansing and Leavenworth County.
Still moved.
Need discussion.
Hang on.
Discussion, okay. We got a motion and a second. All roll.
Mr. Garvey.
Yes.
Mr. Bueller.
Yes.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
Mr. Stoudnica.
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle.
Yes.
Mr. Kirby.
Yes.
Mr. Major.
Yes.
Item number four, fence request for 630 Hill Press Circles. The property owner wishes to extend their fence into the platted setback and outside of the right-of-way, of the right-of-way line. Staff has reviewed the request and finds no conflict with the adjoining site triangles, usements, or road right-of-ways. Need a motion to approve the fence request for 630 Hill Press Circles.
Still moved. Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
One question.
Go ahead, Don.
About the roads or the street angle of sight, line of distance, sight distance. Is that going to be prohibited on that one side?
No, I went out and checked that. Richard and I measured it and it's not within the site triangle.
Great, thank you.
Shouldn't be much traffic there anyway with it being a cul-de-sac and a dead end.
Yeah, good point.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All roll.
Mr. Garvey.
Yes.
Mr. Bueller.
Yes.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
Mr. Stoudnica.
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle.
Yes.
Mr. Kirby.
Yes.
Mr. Major.
Yes.
Item number five, 9G98 sanitary sewer interceptor final report. George Butler Associates were contacted to examine the sanitary sewer options for the K7 in East McIntyre Corridor. Two options were explored, one being a gravity sewer main that would connect near Willow Park and the other being a pump station, horse main connecting north across roads Methodist Church. Pump station has a lower initial cost, but only serves a small portion of the undeveloped area, while the gravity sewer is more costly option, but has the capability to serve all the surrounding basins. There is no regulatory requirement to complete this project and it will not be built until such time that development occurs. Staff is available to answer any questions tonight. I need a motion to accept the 9G98 sanitary sewer interceptor report as presented.
Still moved.
Have a motion and a second. Do we have any questions or any discussion on this one? Marcus.
Yeah, so the last thing you said there, Mayor, was this is basically going on the shelf to not be developed until development occurs in those areas. That's the way I understand it, right?
Yes.
Correct.
Thank you.
Don.
Uh, just a comment for Tony. I've talked with this with Tony before. I think as development starts out there, we pull this off the shelf, we might have to go initially with the lift station option until we get more, enough development for the, for the gravity feed in order to be able to feed properly to our wastewater treatment plant. Am I on the right track with that?
Tony on the line.
You're muted, Tony.
There you go. Can you hear me? All right. Yes, you're correct. The, you know, the pump station would be a stop-get measure that could be implemented to provide, you know, the service to the 146 acres. But, you know, if you look at page 13, you know, the report, there's 1,200 acres that would be served by a gravity sewer, whereas the pump station would only handle 150 of those acres. So as we got into the weeds with the study, we started looking at a cost per acre to service just the McIntyre property as well as the, you know, the entire watershed. The gravity sewer is a more costly option. We would need about 60 to 65 acres to develop at one time in the area to make the gravity sewer a viable option, to make that our first choice. And we have no idea what that development's going to look like, other than we want to be ready for that when it does occur, so.
Hey, that answers my question. Thank you, Tony.
You bet.
Any other questions, gentlemen?
Mr. Garvey.
Yes.
Mr. Bueller.
Yes.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
Mr. Stoudnica.
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle.
Yes.
Mr. Kirby.
Yes.
Mr. Major.
Yes.
Thank you. We'll, we'll keep you updated as, as we learn more and as we get further down the road. Some more decisions will have to get made, but we at least got the, the study out of the way. Now we know what we're looking at going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Okay, report, city attorney.
Nothing to report there.
The Port Authority and Leavenworth County and some of the cities in Leavenworth County have been talking about doing a joint traffic study to outline some of the major projects and transportation improvements in the area. And we expect to be asked to participate in that transportation study. I think some real rough numbers makes it look like our contribution might be around $30,000 or so. We've been asked to be a part of the selection committee for that as well. So there's, there's nothing that really needs to be decided tonight on that. But I do want to give you guys a heads up that we will be asked to participate in that. We, we think our cost would be around $30,000, which we could find money for that. Any questions on that item? Kind of separate topic relating to the sanitary sewer interceptor report. You know, I don't know if it would be advantageous for us to try to work with another entity to maybe get that project more shovel-ready for when development comes. I don't know if it would make sense for the city to try to reach out to possibly the Port Authority or LCDC about working together, although Lansing doesn't have an industrial park or anything like that. Design for that sewer line would make that whole property up and down K7 along McIntyre development ready. So it might be advantageous for us to get the ball rolling on design and then still wait until something is ready before we construct it. But maybe looking at doing design, so. I might try to reach out to the Port Authority to inquire about that, if you guys are okay with that. But again, I, we obviously wouldn't design it unless they wanted to take part in it. And we wouldn't construct it until there's development. You guys have any thoughts on that or that makes sense to you all? Yeah, Don?
Yeah, you know, that sounds good to reach out to Port Authority, whatever. But also, wouldn't it be advantageous to maybe reach out to the large property owners that are out there to see what, you know, maybe their future plans may be? I think we know Lionel Weaver over here on the west, on the east side of the highway anyhow is buying up that whole section, including Lost 80, and planning to develop either homes or whatever to kind of see what they got, maybe see what's going on before we do anything like that.
That's a really good point. I can reach out to some of the property owners along that corridor to kind of feel them out in terms of if sewer design would help them out, what their plans are. So I can certainly do that.
Thank you.
Marcus.
So do we, I mean, I may have missed it, but is there, is there plans? I mean, we're, we're tracking, we're tracking Mr. Ronald Weaver and that piece that Don just mentioned. I'm tracking all that. What I'm not tracking is development or someone who owns and is developing McIntyre Properties, as it's listed as, McIntyre Properties LLC there off of Gilman, which is part of that sewer. Is that something that's, that's been in the place or been in the work? I mean, are we looking at someone developing that pretty soon, like Mr. Ronald Weaver's trying to develop that area over by Lost 80s?
Yeah, no, that's a really good question. There's, there's nothing imminent there to my knowledge. I know Mr. Riley owns one of the corners over there. Mr. Shimkey owns another corner in that area. But there's nothing imminent to my knowledge. I think the goal here is just to get the project shovel-ready. So in 2026, if they say, hey, we want to do this, this, or this, we don't have to wait six or nine months for an engineering study or anything.
Yeah, but from our side.
Sorry. I was just going to say the intent is to get these things ready and designed in the areas that we know we're going to eventually move to. I mean, and that is one of the areas, we can go south.
K7 Corridor.
You know, things may shift if this, you know, gateway project gets through and now we're looking, you know, to the east. But right now, we're looking at what we currently have planned in the future and where the open areas are for development. So we can get the design done, you know, we did the study, design next. Shove the design if we can get some other folks to help us pay for that. And then when, when something happens in that area with the, you know, the property owner, we're ready to go. Don.
Uh, yeah, the only thing I want to comment on was, along with this, what the sewer study is, let's not forget about Sherwood Forest, which we own. Let's not forget about Rock Creek Loop, which is all right in that same area that will connect into that sewer once we provide sewers to them, since we annexed them many years ago.
Good point.
Thanks, Don.
And then the, yeah, the final thing, I want to say at a work session maybe in the fall, when the chief was giving you all a presentation, we talked a little bit about how it seems like so many of the cities surrounding us have implemented case studies recently. And, you know, we did our case study back in 2017, but it pretty quickly became obsolete just because so many surrounding cities implemented theirs almost immediately after. I know there's concern a little bit on our part, and I've spoken to Mayor McNeil and Mayor Smith as well. We want to be sure that we're still competitive with public safety, wages. So I wasn't sure if you guys were open to the city looking to do some type of case study for just the police department for right now, and then we could tackle other departments potentially next year. But just tackling the police department right now and trying to get the ball rolling on that. And I think if it's just one department, I think it'll be a little more cost feasible. So you guys have any thoughts on that or any guidance on that?
Before you guys come in, I'll just pile on. One of the things we did before we did that study was change the, the actual structure, pay structure to a pay-for-performance kind of plan. So, you know, kind of like we have where you're, you're writing your objectives and if you exceed them, you get, you know, a better pay bump or whatever. You know, for first responders, it's not really a good structure, even though we transition them, we transition the entire city to it. So it's not really a good fit. You know, you, you exceed a standard by giving more tickets. You know, I mean, I, you can't, there's not a really good way to, to do that pay-for-performance kind of structure with first responders. And, you know, if we look past just this, at some point, the city is going to have their own fire department. So we're going to want some kind of similar pay structure to bring in all first responders under. So the idea was to get a pay study that kind of restructure it, restructures the pay for first responders. So that's kind of why we want to try and go just with, you know, one, one section, not the entire city pay structure. Hope that helps. But go ahead, any questions?
Yeah, I, I think it's a good idea. I mean, we regularly lose police officers, you know, they go down south. So if we can do something to keep it more competitive and keep those guys here, I think it's a great idea.
Go for it.
Dean, you have something?
Yeah, this, this is something Don and I have asked for on more than one occasion. So I'm glad to see we're finally going to act on it. I think it's a great idea.
Anybody else?
Great, well, Sarah, the chief, and I will coordinate with you, Mayor McNeil, and we'll just ball rolling on proposals from consultants. That's all I have.
Okay, around the horn. Jesse, you're up first tonight.
All right. First, I'd like to say I like Ron Dixon's name tag on his plate there. That's a big name tag he's got right there. I like that.
Yeah.
Thanks to the snow removal crews for getting out there and working hard, you know, over the past week or two. I know they, they've been putting in a lot of hours. And when I seen the notification that there was going to be a four-day weekend for the office people, I was kind of like, wait a minute, is this unfair? They get a four-day weekend and the snow removal crews have been out there working their tails off? But I understood that they got done early and reaped the benefit from that fourth day off. But thank you to them. They worked so hard, they even worked through the Super Bowl and missed every touchdown that the Kansas City Chief scored.
Too soon.
Yeah. My, my last thing was, I went to the planning commission meeting last night and watched them approve a rezoning request from Greenway Reynolds, which went backwards of the comp plan. The property is, and the comp plan is commercial. They rezoned it to residential. You know, I'm hearing a lot of talk from homeowners in Lansing lately that, you know, we're getting almost too many rental properties in Lansing. You know, we've got Lansing Heights, we've got Covington Woods, we've got the Coves, we've got American Lodge 1 and 2. And that's not to mention all the houses. You know, these are just apartments that I mentioned. And when is too many rental properties in a community? You know, a lot of people moved from Leavenworth to Lansing because Leavenworth has really been flooded with a lot of rental properties and it has really hurt their community, I think, in my opinion. I moved from Leavenworth for that very reason and, and to put my children in Lansing schools, don't get me wrong. But I think there's at a point we have to learn to say no and look out for the best interests of the hard-working homeowners of this community and not just lining the pockets of those who want to just get richer. So we're going to vote on this next month in our, the first meeting of the month. So we got a month to look at this information. So I guess over the next month, we have to ask ourselves, are we going to vote to, to look out for the best interests of Lansing's community and the homeowners? Are we going to vote to help someone line their pockets? And that's what we got to look at though, guys, and that's all I've got.
Greg.
So I, I want to jump on what Jesse said too about the snow removal crews. Because I drive up north. Cause I drive up north to go to work every day, and it seems like once I cross Eisenhower, there is a significant difference in the, in the shape of the road, so. Um, yeah, our guys do a great job and they work really hard. I want to thank the, the county commissioners for coming in today. I know this, this project has been something that, that we've been talking about on the council since 2011 when I was on it. And, uh, it, it's good to see it be at least put on the shelf and, and I think if we can get the, uh, the public-private partnership going, that would be a, a real benefit to the city. And finally, on this day in 1930, Clyde Tombott discovered Pluto. That's all I have, Mayor.
You remember that, don't you, Don?
Yeah, sure do.
Hey, Ron.
You said Ron or Don?
I did say Ron.
Okay, okay. Well, I just wanted to say, just give a little bit of, uh, in recognition of Black History Month, as well as Kansas state history as well. Uh, the First Missionary Baptist Church in Leavenworth, Kansas, which I'm a member of and an associate minister, uh, we are the oldest Baptist church in the state of Kansas, established in 1857. Some of our earliest members were Buffalo soldiers. So as a result of this long history with the military, normally the first Sunday in March, we have a big Military Day service slash celebration. But as a result of COVID the last year and then this year, we haven't been able to have that. And so, um, I'm putting out an invitation right now, so next year at this time, I'll be inviting all of you to our Military Day service at First Missionary Baptist Church. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Ron. Hey, Don, with the D.
Uh, all I need to, I want to thank the county commissioners for coming in and giving us the word on 152. Uh, like one of the other council members said, it's, it's been in the works for a long time. I've lived here 35-plus years and, uh, they've talked about it that whole time. Like, thank Tony for his work on the sewer system going south. I think we've got something going there. And the only other thing I got is to, uh, get your shots when you can. That's all I got.
Okay, thanks, Don. Dave?
Yeah, is, uh, is Tony still on there, Zell? I have a sewer question.
So, yeah.
Yes, sir, Mr. Trinkle.
Wait, uh, I've had some, uh, comments by the residents up here. We're on the sewer project on, on, uh, Connie Street. Can you explain what, uh, you were talking about closing the road and where it's going to cross and what they're actually going to do there?
Sure. So the, the road is going to be closed from essentially Seventh Street and Connie to just west of where we're working by that creek. So people will still have access to the trailer park. Everybody's still going to have access locally to their homes. There just won't be any through traffic for that two-block area for people to drive and cut through. I think I took a couple of phone calls this week, um, some residents got confused because we said from Fourth Street in Lansing and Connie, and they misinterpreted Fourth Street to be our Main Street, because that's what they call it in Leavenworth. But I was able to, you know, explain to them that from north Fourth Street in Lansing at the top of the hill to essentially east to Seventh Street will be the, you know, restricted access, but there'll still be local traffic permitted.
That's, that's what they're going to run. You're going to work on putting a new line up Connie Street? That's what you're going to do there? Up to the manhole? Is it going up to the manhole?
Yes, there, there's a manhole right now in front of 600 Connie Street. It's in the street. Um, we'll have to close, you know, that, that 100-foot area down, uh, while we excavate for those manholes and, and the piping, and it should take a couple of weeks. It should have been done by now, but, uh, we've had a two-week bump because of this crazy weather. Uh, we didn't want to tear it up and, and then leave it closed until the weather broke and, uh, just inconvenience people even more, so. That's scheduled to start this coming Monday, and Ken Miller's been working, um, to get that word out through his press releases and social media and stuff, so.
You hit the nail on the head. That was the question that was being asked. They were confused with Fourth Street we were talking about. And I thought it was had, it must be coming out of the hollow there at First Manhole. It must be.
Right. Yeah, a lot of people don't realize the difference between Fourth Street in Leavenworth and Main Street in Lansing, so. We got it taken care of.
Yeah, but I want to put a, uh, kudos out to the street department as usual. Fine job. They're there when, when you need it, they're there. And like, like Greg said, when you head north, you can tell when you're leaving Lansing. And the county commissioners, uh, even we even let Mr. Smith back in for a short while this evening. I think, uh, it's a good idea. I think if we can, as a council and the city, maybe come together and see if we can't make this work. And get, get, get something down, because we've talked about it. You remember Don clear back to the, when, uh, the Pride Committee come to us, they wanted to do Mary Street, was the one that they come across then. And that, that went through and went about '07 and '08, all the money problems started, but I think it's a good idea. I like the idea and I'm sure glad it's the commissioners, uh, come out to visit with us, even Mike Smith. Good luck, Mike. That's all I've got.
Dean?
Yeah, I'll jump on this, thanking everybody. The, the road crews do a great job every time, hands down. Uh, reliable and, and they do great work. I want to echo Don's request that, man, as soon as you can get that vaccine shot, you need to get it. Everybody wants normal. And the quickest way to get it back to normal is for everybody to get that shot to get it. And, uh, keep wearing your mask, washing your hands, and keep your social distance. The end is near. Thank you.
Marcus.
Yeah, so, um, Tim, any, uh, any report on our, on our, where we are with the town center? Uh, interest, anything like that that you can highlight with us tonight?
So we're, we're still in the same place we were. There's, uh, a couple of entities that have expressed interest. They're smaller one-acre type ones that we had talked about in executive session a few months ago. One thing that's new that we're, we're getting pretty close to, uh, discussing with that town center committee is that layout that we had talked about. We had an architect or engineer kind of put together a layout for that big 14-acre parcel, because if you remember, we didn't want a smaller parcel detracting from the visibility of a potential larger parcel. Um, so we did have a, an architect kind of draw something up and hopefully we'll be able to show that to that town center committee soon. But that's, does that answer your question?
Yeah, that's, that's spot on. So do you have a time or a date or something where we're going to get back together again? Have you tentatively looked at a schedule for when we meet again on that?
Um, I, I can shoot that committee an email, uh, tomorrow to try to set something up for three of us to get together and, uh, I think we'd be able to show you guys the layout pretty soon just to get your feedback. And again, that the goal with that was we, we just didn't want to sell off one acre of that big parcel and have it detract from someone else.
Right.
So, yeah, we do have a draft of that, so hopefully we can show that to you soon. I'll, I'll send out an email tomorrow.
Excellent. Thank you, thank you. And, and thanks for your staff. Thanks for your staff and, and big kudos on our road crews and our first responders as always. Um, yeah, the guys have hit it pretty hard tonight, but, I mean, we can't thank our road crews enough and we can't thank our, our, our first responders enough. Hey, tonight's, uh, county commissioners' presentation on the Eastern Gateway Concept Study. And I, I'm on board too. I mean, you, you don't have to tell me this is exciting. I'm all about growth. I'm all about bringing in all types of, uh, businesses and concepts and, and I am concerned with what, um, what one of our fellow council members, uh, mentioned with rental versus stable. I would like to, um, pile on that as well, uh, if we talk about it in the future. Tony, great job on this, on the, uh, on the sewer project. Proud of it. And with that, Mayor, I believe I'm the last one, am I right?
You are.
Okay, with that, I propose that we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, but before we adjourn, yeah, I think, uh, Marcus and I'll, I'll hit Jesse up with this too. We, we can put that on a, uh, work session to discuss the balance between rental properties and, and whether or not, you know, I mean, the comment that when are, when are there too many rental properties? And my, my response was going to say, when they're not full. Right? I mean, you, what you don't want is a whole bunch of vacant rental properties, right? You know, so there's a balance there, and I think that's what Jesse's getting at is you need to look at, you know, not just plunking more and more down, but what is the balance? So we can take a look at that and have discussions about it.
Absolutely. We can schedule that for a work session, some type of housing evaluation or study. The, the one thing that I would say though, I mean, I, that specific item that Mr. Garvey brought up, that's on the agenda for, I believe, the next upcoming council meeting, so a work session would take place now.
Oh, right. Yeah, I mean.
Long-term, yeah, absolutely.
I think that's what we're talking about. We're only talking.
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. All the roll, please.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Bueller?
Yes.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mr. Stoudnica?
Yes.
Mr. Trinkle?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Good night, gentlemen. Member.
Have a good weekend.
Good night.
Alright, gentlemen. We'll see you next time.
Hey, um, Tim, if you get a chance, can you give me a call? I, I need to talk to you about something else.
Yes.
Good luck, Tim.